...document. It tells us how to use the money we receive. But even more than that, it directs our work to accomplish a common goal. The city makes a budget to decide how to spend money on things like parks, police, water, and roads. But why is a budget important? Because it helps make sure the city has enough money.
Okay, so it's 5:30 and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Jessica, would you go ahead and please read the call sheet?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Sal Zar Garza.
Here.
Vice Chair Mandell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Munoz. Commissioner Hedrick.
Here.
Commissioner Bud is absent today. Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Teichman.
Here.
Commissioner Taifki.
Here.
We have a quorum present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you. Can you go ahead and read us the rules of public comment, please?
Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at the City Planning Commission's meeting. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the Planning Commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specified item is being considered in order of the agenda.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. If anybody would like to come and speak on anything other than tonight's agenda, please come forward. If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment and move on to approval of absences for Vice Chair Mandell for August 2025.
I move that we approve the absence of Commissioner Mandell.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes for August 202025.
I move that we approve the minutes from the August 20th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent public hearing and discussion for possible action A, B, and C. And what I will do tonight is go with items two, three, four, five, six, and seven, and we will come back to item six. So right now, I'd like to ask Mr. Andrew to move on forward.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before we start, any recruesals or anyone need to abstain? Okay, just double checking. Alrighty, so beginning with item two under Platts, we have PL 8866, a replat Bank Park Plaza. Item number three, replat in Oasis Gardens Unit Two. Item number four, a final plat for Laughlin subdivision of these three Platts. They have been reviewed by the Technical Review Committee and deemed in line with both Unified Development Code and Texas Local Government Code. The Technical Review Committee and staff recommend approval. Item number five under plat, time extensions, is PL 211015. This is a preliminary for the Pin Oak Terminal. A little bit of backstory on that one. This is, I believe, their first official time request extension. This was a very long special permit that we did a number of years ago near the airport. Extending the plat does help keep the SP alive. So that's not to bias your decision. I would just say it gives the ability to check a couple of boxes if you so choose to approve the time extension. Staff, of course, is recommending approval. Then, under letter C for zoning, item number seven, zoning case ZN 8853 Eduardo Gonzalez in District Three. This is a request at 4921 Castor's Road from the RS6 Single Family Six District to the CG One General Commercial District. The purpose of the request is for a used car lot. That being said, after staff reviewed the case and had a discussion with the applicant, which they were in agreement with, to settle for the CN One District with a special permit. Now, the way it works is whenever somebody applies, some of you have been applicants in the past before, we take into account surrounding neighborhood. CG One opens the door to many other uses like bars, nightclubs, mini storage. This is a fairly small lot. So even if we grant the CG One, it becomes more of an issue of building permits and opening the door to higher commercial level businesses. So the compromise would be it's next to the new proposed fire station on Castor's in between a home and a small strip center at the corner of Castor's and SPID. We thought CN One would reduce the type of businesses, still checks the box, the SP will let them have their used car lot. It also will reduce the buffer yards that they're required to have because it's a smaller lot. When you go for CG, it's going to kick in 15-foot buffer yards. This will bring it down to 10, so it gives them a little bit of breathing room. Doesn't require the big high walls because there's not going to be any type of noise generator like a nightclub or after-hours restaurant may have. So they were in agreement with the CN One SP recommendation by staff. So that is what we're recommending on number seven. And of course, that concludes tonight's agenda, consent agenda, I should say. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff on any of these items?
On number seven, can you pull up the list of items that were the special permit restrictions?
Sure.
Let's see, I think it was about six or seven different things you all put on there.
Oh, I got it. No worries. Alrighty. Let's move to our conditions. Okay. So your buffer, to start with, number one, the use, of course, will be the base zoning district. So everything allowed in your CN One. Those are very small restaurants that are under, I believe, 3,000 square feet. Of course, that's probably about the size of the lot. It's a fairly small lot. It allows your offices, medical uses. Of course, one of the few things it does not allow is car dealerships. Does not allow paint and body shops, does not allow anything more going to that heavier level of commercial use. Parking is, some of these are repeats that you will see in the UDC. The reason we put them in a special permit, I like to call it the belt and suspenders method, is not only, yes, it'll be listed in the UDC, but for the applicant, it's clearly outlined that these are the sections of the UDC that will be applicable. So don't be surprised if you get a landscape comment, or a parking comment, or your dumpster requirements. While they are standard requirements, again, I call it belt and suspenders because we're reiterating. So parking, landscaping, and dumpsters, those are standard comments out of the UDC. Hours of operation, I thought I'd fix that typo, but it says shall be prohibited after 7:00 PM. That means no selling of cars after 7:00 PM. Of course, we understand that cars get dropped off, cars get delivered. There are provisions in the UDC that allow for that. The one thing you cannot do is park your 18-wheeler on the street and offload. I do have comments, certain dealerships do that on SPID, but that's a tech top problem, not my problem. There is a time limit that's standard that says if you do not initiate your project within a year, your SP just expires, meaning you're not showing forward, very similar to a plat, if you're not showing forward progress, we move on, you move on, we wish you the best. And item number five is the buffer yards, what I was talking about. We reduced it from 15 feet, which is standard in general commercial districts, down to 10, which is allowed in the neighborhood commercial district. And then if you have any noise generators, you would have to put up the fence or the larger wall. In this case, we didn't see anything on the plans, preliminary plans or site plan, that said, yes, I'm going to have a paint and body shop, I'm going to have anything that makes noise. Again, hence the reason for a special permit. We're putting very specific limitations on, you're not going to have that paint and body shop, you're only going to have the car dealership that you're seeking to have. And that pretty much wraps up the conditions for the SP. If there are any questions, happy to address them.
So can they work on cars there at all, or only sell cars? So they couldn't do an oil change, or?
You can do an oil change, and the reason for that is there are two types of what we call vehicle service, sales and service uses. The light vehicle sales and service, which is outlined in section 1.1 of the UDC, says I can do batteries, belts, oil plugs, I'm sorry, spark plugs, oil changes, I can flush my radiator, anything that's light maintenance. If I want to do transmission repair, engine repair, if I want to get into paint and body shop, rust-proofing, undercoating, excuse me, anything that's a higher level, I'm required to have general commercial, and even in some cases, light industrial. So this would only allow probably oil changes. So think of your Take Five Oil, Minuteman Oil, which I think they just changed their name, but that is about the threshold that you're allowed to do in CN One. The applicant did not mention any of those uses. Of course, what you may see today and what you may see five years from now are two different things. Nevertheless, the CN One District already allows that.
Okay. And did we get any notices back from any of the neighbors in the buffer zone for this one?
We did not. Next door, so just for a point of reference, Castor's Road between McCardle and SPID. Numbers four and 13 are existing, and number seven are existing single-family homes. Number eight is a vacant lot. Number 10 is the new fire station. Nine is a vacant lot. And then you see the subject property. As you can see, there's not going to be a lot of room. So we as staff start to look at kind of the big picture. That's always one of the messages I wear on my wrist is remember the big picture is, it's such a small lot, the odds of one of those higher uses, like a paint and body shop, even if they tried, the market simply wouldn't support it on such a tight space.
Okay, appreciate it.
No problem.
One question, Andrew. When the city receives a notice of a proposed zoning change, do they ever respond favorably or unfavorably?
No, we do not respond.
Okay. But do you send a letter anyway?
By, and I'm glad, you know, actually, it's funny, I'm glad you asked that. So if you remember the quick briefing I did last go around, if you get into the weeds of the bill about public notifications where it expanded the 60% rule, it kept the 200-foot buffer area. For whatever reason, I guess the state in their infinite wisdom left a line that said rights-of-way have to stay in the notification area. One of the longest standing discussions I've had with partners and state agencies is why do we include the right-of-way? The city gets a notice, we crumple it, sometimes we, you know, don't even stamp it. It goes to the meter room, comes right back. So what's the point? Is that the state statute says I specifically have to. But we do not respond.
Okay. I just, I remember back when we were evaluating the zoning change at the corner of Alameda and Texan Trail for the Quick Whack?
Yes. Very lovingly remember that case.
And the diocese was in that notification range, and they were not allowed to respond. But whenever I called the principal of St. Patrick's School, they had definite concerns. And so I'm just kind of curious. I'm thinking of, you know, things that might impact the operations of a fire department or a police substation or something like that, so.
Hopefully, they'll get a discount if they choose to.
Yeah, there you go.
It's there, I'm sure. A bright spot.
All right, cool. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions for staff? If not, then I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for items two through, or two, three, four, five, and seven. If anybody would like to come and speak on these items, please come forward. Please state your name.
My name's Michael Parker. I live in Flower Bluff on Glen Oak, and I think that's item seven, but I don't, I'm not sure.
Sir, we're doing, we're not doing item six. It's up next.
We're doing what, ma'am?
That'll be the next item. You'll have to speak on it.
Oh, okay.
Hold that thought. You can be the first one.
Okay, so if I have no one coming to speak on these items, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item six as presented by staff.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item six. I guess, Andrew, you go ahead and.
Yes, ma'am.
You go on item six.
Okay, just two quick housekeeping. We're updating the format on, oh, that one's not mine. I know we had had internal staff discussions about updating the format. I thought they had put the surprise on me. Okay, so forget that one. And please excuse my voice, I'm dealing with a cold, so I have to take a sip of my savior Dr. Pepper, which is a few doctors that I trust. Please bear with me. So, starting with tonight's item number six, the project is called Corpus Project LLC. It is located in District Four on the eastern side of Flower Bluff, the corner, essentially, corner two streets, Glen Oak and Laguna Shores. The request is from the Single Family Six District to both the RM One Multifamily District and CN One Neighborhood Commercial District. To kind of show where that dividing line is, the larger tract that you see on Glen Oak is to serve as the commercial area for hopefully a four or five-tenant commercial shopping center. The other lots, as they are on the cul-de-sac, would be the majority of where your potential apartments could be located. Might be townhouses, might be duplexes. They did indicate the RM One District. After some discussion with staff, there was some preliminary discussions of a higher threshold, but we talked about, you know, trying to fit into the character of the neighborhood, maybe establishing that lower threshold of RM One, which is the lowest apartment district we have at 22 units an acre. Now, as a preface, 22 units an acre always sounds like this big scary number. It doesn't mean that 22 acres will be built. By the time we factor in landscaping and parking, and if there's notoriously, there's areas of the bluff that have floodplain and what, floodplains and wetlands, you address all those, including, up to and including stormwater quality management, that number tends to dwindle down. No, I'm preaching to the choir, but it's always helpful for the audience just to hear that. So it's not just this big scary 22 units an acre number. Moving along, of the proposed use, which we consider a mixed use, both commercial and residential, it is in the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan, of course. The main future land use map is calling for high-density residential, so that can take you up all the way to 36 units an acre. Again, taking into account, character of the neighborhood is a quieter part of the bluff, so that is why we recommended the RM One District. Why, that also includes the level of traffic you will see in commercial subdivision, commercial properties. Having 36 units an acre, I can tell you, probably generates as much traffic as a Walgreens or an HEB in some cases, depending on the part of the city you're in. So, again, scaling down to CN One Neighborhood Commercial and having that lower threshold of apartments is something we did take into account as part of our staff analysis. Looking around at adjacent land uses. Looking around at adjacent land uses, we do have vacant to the north, we have vacant to the south, you have Laguna Shores to the east, some single-family homes that are on the other side of Laguna Shores at Eastern Bound Lane, and to the west, you have low-density residential, and then more low-density residential as you cross Deborah Lane. Of the 25 notices we sent out thus far, we've received officially six in opposition. I know a few more came in tonight, so it has probably grown from 11.4% to probably either 12, maybe just into the low 13% threshold. Zero in favor. So the staff analysis, first and foremost, we look to the Flower Bluff area development plan. We know that our citizens of Flower Bluff are very passionate about that area development plan, so that is why we take hold, and that is the first box we check. We visit and send out notices to our citizenry as well as visit with folks from the school district and send them a notice as well. Also, it's required by state law, so they are fully aware. So the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan. The one inconsistency is the entire land use is called out for high-density residential. Now, again, we as staff have to take a look at the big picture, that's my motto for planning, is always look at the big picture, is that 36 units an acre, which high-density residential allows at a high threshold, is a lot of traffic. So part of our analysis, discussions with the applicant, to scale that down back to a combination of neighborhood commercial and RM1, which is the lowest threshold for apartments, which again, could be townhomes, does allow duplexes, it doesn't inherently mean you will build 22 units an acre of apartments, and you can build single-family homes in that same zoning district. So keeping that in mind, that is the one inconsistency of the many, many tenants that are established by the Flower Bluff ADP. All other boxes have been checked, all other lights are green. Now, the requested districts are compatible with president, present zoning and conforming with a majority of the nearby properties. The neighborhood scale commercial, just as I mentioned, how we kind of came up with the background and how we arrived at our approval recommendation. Sometimes what you see in the slides is the very 30,000 high-level view, as much as my staff tells me, I have a tendency to get way into the weeds and want to tell the entire story, but I think that's important for planning commission to get that full picture. So you do see that this is not a flippant decision that we make with any zoning case. We do spend a lot of time visiting with our applicants to ensure that they have successful projects, you know? We never want to set anybody up for failure, and of course, we want to see growth in all parts of the city and including Flower Bluff. So that is the conclusion of our staff presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
There's a couple of lots that are not included in the rezone. What's going on there?
Now, let's go back. So those are owned by separate owners.
And do you know what the width is of, you know, the, or the, so we got this cul-de-sac, right?
Sure.
And then how deep are those lots on either side?
So those are RS6 lots, so they would have to be at a minimum 50 feet wide by code, and more than likely, at least 150 feet deep, if not more.
Okay, so we're probably looking at 330 feet wide or so? I'm trying to envision in my head what that would look like, because obviously, in RM1, they're capped at, what height, 45 feet?
45 feet. Now, keep in mind, that doesn't inherently mean, just like I say with the density question, we have a protect, exactly.
You got the hypotenuse.
Exactly, I got to have a measure for the hypotenuse. So for the audience, that means that for every foot I go up above 12 feet, so on that 13th foot and up, I must set two feet off of the property line shared with a single-family home. That is our insurance policy to make sure that no one's balcony is going to be peeking into anyone's backyard.
Right.
So while the code will say, yes, you can go up to 45 feet, on those smaller sections that are closer to Laguna Shores, the code will prevent a four-story building because they simply don't have enough setback space.
Matt, the CN1 is that entire largest rectangle?
Yes.
Or is it also that little kickoff there to the side?
From the map that I saw, it was the largest rectangle.
Okay.
It did not include the rest of it, is going to be your apartments. Now, I'm not a designer, nor do we ever give, really get into design advice to our customers because it gets into a liability issue, but nevertheless, I envision you're going to see probably duplexes on those smaller parcels that are between privately-owned lots and Laguna Shores. More than likely, there'll be one story, if I had to guess, and then the rest is where you may see higher density of townhomes, and you use parking as your buffer, so you're not getting too close to the single-family homes.
And you didn't get any responses from the owners of lots 21, 22, and 23?
I know three responses came in today, just in the audience. The last count that was, as of 4:55, was at six. So unless they're in the audience, I did not personally see any responses.
Because I didn't, I didn't get a chance to get out to Flower Bluff to take a look at those three lots this morning, because I had to run to Rockport pretty early, but I was curious if those are built out at this point.
That is a good question. I don't believe, there we go, they are not built out.
That's a, that's a recent satellite image?
It is a late 2024 aerial.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Andrew, I've got a question as far as the frontage and the distance, so the amount of frontage you have between those two items, those, you just switched the map on me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Between numbers 11 and 18, what is the total frontage there on Glen Oak?
11 and 18. That, I do not know, if I had to guess, the frontage, you mean how much width they take up? So on 11, let's see, your other 50-foot lot's probably 100, 150 feet, 150 feet on number 11, number 18 is probably closer to 200. And that's just what's in the bubble. It's going to be another 50 feet for number 18 of the entirety of Glen Oak that they take up, if that was your question.
Okay. And then on the backside, on the south side of that property, is there a body of water there?
Now, that is an excellent question, and I know that that came up in some of the comments from folks sending in their notices. So there are two stages when it comes to any property development. I call it two sides of the same coin. Zoning sets the land use. If you remember our planning and zoning 101s, zoning will set the land use, what you can and can't do on properties. Plating, which is the next half, is how you subdivide, how you combine lots separately. As part of that process, so this will most definitely require a replat to delete most of these dividing lines, will come what's called a stormwater quality management plan. In that plan, they have to identify how all stormwater will be mitigated on-site. No drainage can leach onto another property owner. That includes how much fill they can bring in, that includes if it's in a floodplain area in which there has to be minimum standards to the height in which a structure has to be built to, as far as giving ground clearance. Other things that come into that plan are wetlands, and they, if it is a jurisdictional wetland, they have to get clearance from the Army Corps to determine, A, is it or is it not jurisdictional? Two, if it is, can I build in it?
Right.
I have, in 18 years, I have not seen the Army Corps grant too many construction projects inside of a wetland minus dune walkovers on Mustang Island, because there is no occupiable space, no one's living there, you're getting your golf cart and driving to the beach. But outside of that, I have never seen a habitable structure built into a floodplain or in this, or not a floodplain, I'm sorry, a wetland.
Right. Okay. So what we decide today, regardless of either way, there still are other steps that they, property owners will have to go through.
So just as the first three items tonight, you will see the plat, you can ask 100 questions. I'm more than happy to keep PC in the loop as we get closer on this project. I know the applicant is present here tonight if you have questions for him, but knowing the bluff, it is, it is a peninsula, it does have these kind of small historical Resaca lakes that fill and then dry over time depending on the storm event. So I know that's going to be a significant item of discussion as we get into the plating process.
Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Andrew, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On 21, 22, and 23, those lots, so where, if we were to change this rezoning, that these, these individuals that are on there, they'll have to conform to what we decide or what?
No, not at all. They are not touched. 21, 22, and 23 will retain their RS6 zoning, they are not part of, and that's just so everybody can see, 21, 22, and 23 are outside of the request, they will remain RS6.
What, in your opinion, what differences does that make when you, when, from a building standpoint, you mentioned earlier about it being, more than likely being townhomes in those particular areas? Are these individuals for consistency of building, right? How does that, how does, you know, how does that thing go with the overall appearance of that particular street?
So again, I have to preface, I'm not a designer, but what I would foresee is to work around parking requirements, to work around, and I shouldn't say work around, to be able to meet what the UDC sets. So if I'm building a single-family home, I have to provide two parking spaces, I have to provide a couple of trees in the front yard, my height restrictions, how wide the lot is. When it comes to your lots that are between, you're hemmed in between a single-family zoning on the east, so let's take the section adjacent to lot 21, in between that lot and Laguna Shores, so I have number seven to the north of me, 21 to the west of me, and a road to the east of me, and of course, a road to the south. I'm hemmed in on four sides, which means I can't build the tallest structure in the world, because I'll have to meet on two sides that separation of one to two setback if I build it too tall. I have to conform to parking spaces, and because I'm apartment zoning, I have to create 30% of my front yard as landscaping area, even though we're in drought restriction, you still have to turn it in on the plan, so I still can't build in that area. The only way to make that work is I'm going to have to build something smaller that I can still market, which is going to be in the realm of a duplex or a smaller townhome. So I can put the garage on the first floor if I have to build up, let's say, just hypothetical, there is a wetland I have to deal with, I'm going to have to build up, I can put an open carport on the first floor, and then put one floor of habitation, I'll still be able to meet the one to two setback, but I'm not going to be able to stuff units essentially in layman's terms. I can't put 15 apartment units in that one spot, the code won't let me.
I guess the, the question I have is more than likely if these, these folks had bought this, and I don't even, I mean, the length of time that they have owned these particular lots, when they purchased them, that they wanted to put a single-family on something like that, they're just too small of a lot to be able to do.
Right, so let's go back to our aerial. McNeely Street is what we call a paper street, and so that is a very common issue in Flower Bluff. The his, the very brief history that I'll tell you is until 1995, when a state law changed, anytime the city annexed an area, we were not required until 95 to put in utilities. You didn't have to put in a road, you didn't have to put in water, you didn't have to put wastewater, even to plat. That changed 95, and then even furthermore, as state legislative sessions happen, more and more requirements to prevent colonias, everybody knows what a colonia is, you go and plat land out in the boonies, and you cut up lots, you sell them off, but you have no utilities. To prevent that from happening inside city limits, the state said municipalities required to say you have to have water, wastewater, and a means of access to all platted lots, period. McNeely Street, being a paper street, is in order for me to build on 21, 22, or 23, I have to build the street to get to those lots, and I have to install water and wastewater before day one of pulling a building permit. So I'm going to have to spend literally thousands of dollars before I overturn one shovel's worth of dirt, including all the civil engineering costs and design. So it's, it's quite, it has to be almost a passion project that you absolutely love this site, and you want your forever dream home there, because you're going to be into the red far before you start to build anything.
Got it. Okay, appreciate it.
You bet.
Is any of this area in the ACUs?
That was the first thing I checked, no, thank goodness.
Figured you'd have a slide on it if it was.
Believe it, ACUs. Or I would, oh, Ben, many a apology.
And if they do get RM1, they can still build single-family, which?
Absolutely.
Would that be like RS 4.5, then?
Depending on how you divide up the lot, so if they want to sell them fee simple, yes, it would have to follow the same, off the top of my head, it is 6,000 square feet, so I can have a platted RM1 lot to build a single-family home, minimum lot size is almost identical to RS6.
So if we granted them RM1, they couldn't turn around and build an RS 4.5?
No.
In this, or an RS3 in the future?
Does not allow you, and then even the RS3 question, this would have to be at least five acres, and I believe it is at, I had this dog eared, 9.87 acres. Now, one of the internal discussions, and this is not to pull Buck into this discussion, but we haven't gotten to it yet as far as UDC requirements defining what is unplatted. So yes, the state legislature gave us this grenade that says if it's unplatted, you have, you are able to build your RS3 lots. They did not define what unplatted means. So I've been getting many an email from other municipalities saying, hey, do you guys have a definition of what is unplatted? But we haven't gotten there yet. There was no intent or anything expressed to us as staff that this applicant wanted to take you down that road, because again, if you have to deal with any other outstanding issues, that's going to add to the cost. But nevertheless, no, this is not an RS3 potential scenario, and if they try to go smaller, the minimum lot size for RM1 is 6,000 square feet.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Is McNelly Road?
Yes.
Neely Road built?
McNeely, Mc, I think it's McNelly or Mc.
But it's a, it's a paper street, it hasn't been built?
It is a paper street, has not been built.
Okay. Got it.
Excuse me.
Any other questions, Commissioner? If not, then at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for item number six. If anybody would like to come and speak, please state your name and.
I did sign up, and I am representing the applicant. My name is Ken Brown.
Okay.
I think I can answer some of your questions, or at least give you some more information.
Is it okay if you go after the others that are coming in to sign up?
Sure.
If that, if that'd be okay?
It's always advisable, because maybe they have some concerns that you might be able to address, and so it's traditional that the applicant go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please come up.
For one thing, I requested some of you guys drive out there and take a look at this property.
Please state your name, sir.
Oh, Michael Parker.
Okay.
And I live at, in the 200 block of Glen Oak since 1990. But anyway, across the street is a Red-Headed Duck Pond, and it used to be under the state birding wildlife area or something, I don't know if they still are involved with that. Under that, when you get to the middle of that Red-Headed Duck Pond, there's a, there's a big drainage pipe into the property that, that is being requested to be rezoned. I, I, I hope that you guys don't do this. I have, this came up about five to 10 years ago, and there was an organizer person that lived on the corner of Glen Oak and Deborah, and there was a lot of people, and they all came and they all were against it, except for the three or four guys that owned that place, owned that property. But that, inside that property, there's a big lake, and it's maybe not as deep as the Red-Headed Duck Pond, but it's been there for years. That's a water catchment area. And I live a half a mile from Laguna Shores, and therefore, my insurance on flood insurance is, you know, they come in, say you're in flood zone one, whatever. But anyway, they just changed me to a higher level, so I don't have to pay as, quite as much insurance, because these areas catch all this water, even though we haven't had any. If you drive by the Red-Headed Duck Pond, there's a lot of, a lot of water there, and there's a lot of birds, a lot of birds out there. So, but the other thing is, that road isn't designed for anybody. I mean, there's a lot of kids that, that go to that school and at Flower Bluff schools and stuff, there's nowhere for them to walk. I mean, it's just, it's just not a good place to develop. And so really, go out and take a look before you guys, you know, let them come in and fill this in, and always remember about Harvey, what happened in Houston, fill up those bays. Fill up those byers, and they flood. So, thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak?
Hello, my name is Andrew Hill. I've been a citizen of Corpus Christi for forty-eight years, and my family have, and I have lived adjacent to the property in question since two thousand nine. My neighbors and I have had a unique opportunity to observe the property very closely during our houses' construction. The three of, three of us, three of our houses live in, we live in second-story stilt houses with decks that overlook the property. Our main doors look out toward the land, so every time we go outside, we are looking at this property. For at least sixteen years, my neighbors and I have become more familiar with this land than anyone else. I'm opposed to the zoning change. The most important thing to say about it, it is, is that it is a natural low-lying wetland. The pond never dries up. Drainage from our properties drains to a pond on the land. During major storms, the pond can swell to many times its normal size. It actually, the pond swells, and it covers halfway through my backyard. The excess runoff then flows to and replenishes Red-Head Pond, which is a protected wildlife sanctuary. Developing this land with roads and multifamily housing will deprive Red-Head Pond of a major source of water, causing it to go dry much more often. This will endanger lots of wildlife in our area. Some of the wildlife that I have personally seen are sandhill cranes, caracaro birds, rosette spoonbills, great herons, owls, hawks, many species of duck, hummingbirds, sandpipers, deer, javelina, coyotes, bobcats, blue crabs, fiddler crabs, and seagrasses. I wanted to play this little clip for you. Let's see. Sandhill cranes, I took that clip from my house in November twenty twenty-four. Sandhill cranes spend the summer in Yellowstone National Park, and they go all the way up to Canada. They come all the way down to South Texas and Mexico, and many of them spend weeks in that little pond behind our houses. They come to the pond every year. I think they like the pond because it's quiet and secluded, and it seems like a place that they can rest to continue their journey. If you rezon this property, you destroy another habitat for migratory birds in Corpus Christi. We pride ourselves on being the birdiest city in America. If we keep destroying natural habitat like this property, we lose that title, and deservedly so. Please do not allow this rezoning to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So my name is Lori Meredith. I live at the one-two-one Glen Oak. I'm lot number eleven. I kinda get the double whammy, because I have two property lines coming up against the commercial. I have been attempting to get speed bumps put on Glen Oak since September of twenty-two. They did a survey, fourteen hundred vehicles are on our street every day, and eighty-five percent of those travel forty-eight miles an hour or more. I've been attempting to get speed bumps, that are, that street just cannot support that many cars. There's already way too many people speeding, there's already too much traffic, the school's right there. I'm also very concerned, as everyone else is, about the water. I'm scared that all this rain and all the water runoff, if they backfill all that, and there's no permeable area, all that water is just gonna come and flood out Glen Oak. Ever since they've raised Laguna Shores, we already have trouble down by Williams at the corner of Laguna and Glen Oak. It floods, and then the other side floods across from Red-Head Pond, and I'm stuck in the middle. It's totally flooded to Laguna, and then totally flooded to Debra. And if they take away what little bit of retention pond there is now, it's gonna flood out that whole street. I mean, it, it'll be very sad to see that little area turn commercial. It just cannot handle it. I understand wanting to do residential, multifamily, but it's the commercial that's very, very frightening for that little area. It's a, already too busy, too many people, I can't even get the speed bumps that we're supposed to get. I've been fighting that since September of twenty-two. It would be a shame to put in commercial in that area. I definitely oppose.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come and speak?
My name is Kenneth Carr. I'm lot number seven, on Laguna Shores, twenty-eight-ten Laguna Shores. For the record, I am opposed. I'd like you to see the map, unless you already have a copy in front of you. Is that possible? I mean, I can see it on here. Thank you. The, this particular area is unique in a lot of ways, and that's why it's still undeveloped. Flower Bluff is not just this copy-stamped place. These particular low areas are FEMA-zoned, the new zone is AE, which is a mandatory elevation of building that's ten feet at the road, and gradually ends up nine feet. So I know he said plating and stormwater mitigation came later, but just to not encourage this type of thing, the rezoning does just that. The, the original people that plaid, had it platted that way, didn't understand how low it was in the flooding. And the flooding, I know firsthand, I have really nice videos of it. Even storms that didn't make big headlines are a big thing in this particular area, because the, like Alberto last summer, the new road is, was built intentionally two feet higher in front of this piece of property. And Alberto had no problem breaching that, waves and all. So right there, you're talking two feet, FEMA says you gotta build ten feet. And so putting this type of structure or idea in place, like I say, the zoning, I guess, doesn't matter, but the actual ideas that they have on building it don't make a lot of sense. You know, my house is twelve feet off the ground. Windstorm insisted, sounded kinda radical to me, but I'm really happy it's there, because I've had waterfront property most of the time, and I'm on the wrong side of the street. The other thing was, when they put this road in, I went to the planning commission and told them that this particular property is a huge runoff zone. She's, someone said that Flower Bluff is a peninsula, and it is. The bluff actually starts on the backside of this property. Prior to this, it's just low wetland. The pond they're talking about is just a, a sign of how low the property is. It never does. My property is one foot above sea level, one foot. My driveway now goes uphill, because the road's two feet. So what happens is, when it rains, it doesn't have to be a storm, all these areas behind it, from Waldron, drain to the Laguna Madre. Naturally, they're gonna find a way. Van Gaal and ditch is a cool idea, but it doesn't have the capacity. So this water just runs down. It used to run and wash the sand over the road, now it just packs against it. They didn't put any conduits. When I talked to them about putting conduits, stormwater conduits under the road, former councilman Greg Smith took me aside afterwards and said, show me on the map, and I did. But unfortunately, the project was too far along, putting big storm conduits under the road was gonna make it classified as a bridge, and that exceeded the budget for the improvements.
Thank you, sir.
My time's up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just thirty more seconds to say two things. Number one, commercial insurance down there is, is expensive enough to deter the restaurant they were gonna put in. And finally, there, despite what your maps show, there's no sewer service. The sewer lines under the road are pressurized.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Cheryl Stubblefield. I have property four on the map. This is, this happened, this whole thing came up about ten-plus years ago, and they tried to develop it. And again, like was mentioned, that they were against it for all the reasons you've just heard. The sewer line that he made reference to, it's under high pressure, none of us can tap into it. So if this project were to move ahead, they would have to have infrastructure. You mentioned this paper road, that if anybody did anything, they would have to bring in the infrastructure. You can't tap into this high-pressure line. It services, because they're low, it has to have pressure to push it on. So I don't know who is, who did the research on the access to the, access to sewer water, but it's not available to us. So that would have to be, come into play with it. And we had a property over on the other end of Glen Oak before, and we were told if we were to, we had a twenty-acre piece, if we were to divide it in half, we'd have to pay sixty-five thousand dollars in infrastructure to divide that line. This is so much more here. That paper road, if anybody builds, that's one of the requirements, I understand, if you just mentioned that you would have to do all the services, because there are none available right now. We have city water, we do not have, and one of the other things is the size of the water tap that is going down Glen Oak and Laguna Shores. That would be another thing. This is, this is just such a nature area. I grew up, I'm hundred percent Flower Bluff, Bluff rat through and through. My dad was a commercial fisherman. We watched tourism take over. He got him out of his job. Fortunately, he retired in his eighties as the oldest fisherman in the Bluff. My grandparents lived on the peninsula of the Naval Air Base before it was built. Knickerbocker was their home after that. This is just a part, this, this commercial part, it's not in the Bluff planning. I know in your notes, you mentioned, that's the one thing, that the commercial part was not a part of the Bluff development plan. It's, it's not, I have several maps, future land use, a zoning map, and Bluff existing land use. Commercial property is not a part of the Bluff plan. A strip store, that, again, you just need to come out there and see what it is. For you to pass that to be allowed, commercial part is, is, I'm sorry, we are, we're definitely against it, but I feel like there needs to be more insight into what this, this area really is about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come and speak?
I'm John Stubblefield, and it'd be lot four. My concern is, since they have redone Laguna Shores and raised it, when Alberto came, everything from the lagoon that was trashed from the island, it came over the road and into my lot. I spent a week or two picking them up, two-by-fours, fence posts, fishing stuff, all kinds of stuff. So when it floods, it doesn't drain to the lagoon, it comes back up. So everything is coming off the Bluff, the higher side, Debra Street, down into this area where you're wanting to redo. And also, our, part of our property, and the map it shows, you can see where seawater intrudes. So I have a portion of my lot that won't grow grass, it's just, it's just dead, and it goes across. And every time the water, there's a storm, the water rises from the lagoon, and then comes through the culvert that water's supposed to go out, into the pond, and then back around to our side. And then what, it can funnel back out, once everything's gone, and water slowly goes back out. So I don't see how adding more development is gonna help that. We're just, we're just gonna get flooded even more. So that was my main concern. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak?
Randall White, lot fifteen. Two thousand and seven is when I bought this lot, my forever home, and this is why. Oh my God, I can't get it to play now. That's what I see every day when I drive up to the house. This is where they wanna build a park. That's the pond, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak? No one else? Would you like to come and speak now?
Once again, my name is Ken Brown. I'm here representing the applicant. Do you have my presentation? So we've been working on this case since May. We did have a pre-development with staff that included public works, drainage, every department. And so all of these issues about drainage and roadways and utilities, those were brought up in those meetings and, and have been made aware to us. And we have designed a plat, and it'll be a two-lot plat, one commercial, one for the residential. And we will be submitting that if the zoning goes. You'd go to the next slide. So approximately seven point seven acres is, is the residential request, two point one-two acres is the commercial. We would anticipate, or we intend to build duplexes, twenty-six of them, which is fifty-two units, which is about three units per acre, which is very low-density. On the commercial, it would be a strip commercial, but we would anticipate getting somewhere in the range of eight thousand square feet, maybe four, four users in there, local service sort of commercial uses. And, and that's what we went through with the staff, as far as coming up with the recommendation. We, we knew what we generally wanted to do, but we worked with staff as to what we requested. And I think staff went over why we're requesting this, this zoning base district. It, it does allow duplexes, it does allow much more intensity, that is not our intent, because we have a lot of design concerns, and they've been brought up. There is a pond there, there is, there is flood plain, there are drainage issues. If you would go to the site plan? So this is what we expect it would look like, after taking in consideration of the staff's comments and the design constraints under your UDC. We then brought this to the Flower Bluff Citizens Council, and all of these issues were brought up again, and we do have their recommendation of support, and Joe Kramer was going to be here tonight, I don't see him, but the issue of streets, you know, there, there is rough proportionality, we will have to pay a pro-rata share for improvement of streets and sidewalks along the perimeter streets. We are aware of the pond, it will, obviously won't be touched, and as a matter of fact, the owner is going to build his house on the other side of that pond. So he, he intends to live in that same area also. We did meet with the councilperson, and she brought up the issue of the commercial, and if we could put up a, there's a certain type of fence, I think it's an eight-foot fence, to provide protection for the existing single-family. So we, we will be in the plating stage, complying with your drainage ordinance and, and all of your other utility ordinances. All these issues were brought up at the pre-development meeting, and our engineer has, has addressed them. I will say, the Red-Headed Duck Pond was brought up at the Citizens Council meeting also, and they were sort of excited about it, because they say the death of that pond is saltwater. And there has been developments in areas like that, where you take our drainage of freshwater and put it into the pond, and, and back out the saltwater, that, that makes that pond even more viable. We're aware of these issues, none of, I mean, I just met some of these people earlier, and I am not going to say, they know this area better than anybody. But we are aware of the issues, and we did meet with the Citizens Council, and they did have suggestions about how, how to work with this. They were excited about bringing school-age kids to the school that could walk there. And so... Uh, and so, um, as your staff said, this is the land use component of it. Uh, all those other issues are, are, are really addressed at plating. Uh, we are proposing a very low-density residential, uh, development with what we consider a modest amount of service, local, uh, commercial. And, um, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Uh, we are aware of those outlots that are not a part of the zoning case and they will remain. Uh, it isn't through lack of trying. Uh, you know, it, it took a lot, um, a lot of work to get all the owners to sell that we did. And so, um, we're not done and we hope that maybe they will, uh, join in on it, but if they don't, we will design around them and, and be compatible with what they're, they eventually do with their property. So if you have any questions, um, I would be more than happy to answer them. As I said, we are aware of these issues. They will be addressed. Um, and we, we look forward to being a good neighbor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question for the applicant.
Yes.
Those three lots, are they owned by one person or three separate people?
Three separate people that I know have been, I think one of them, we, we haven't even been able to get a hold of. Uh, every one that we were able to get a hold of was willing to sell. And so we would-
Just going to agree on a price or what?
Right. Well, first is just getting a hold of them, but I, I think they will be a part of the, the project ultimately.
Okay.
They, they have no immediate plans of doing anything with the property.
Okay. Any other questions for the developer commissioners?
Thank you.
Let me ask you something. I want to ask you something. Yeah. Okay, so this pond that's there, is this commercial building that you're trying to develop here, is that going to affect it in any way? Because you're saying that the develop, I mean, the owner is going to go ahead and build himself a house-
Mm-hmm.
-in that area. And, yeah, and this developing, is, how is it going to, is it going to affect the pond in any way?
The pond is on the other side of Glen Oak to the-
Right. Yeah, so we're going completely the other way. Uh, nature and-
For clarity, there's two ponds. There's, there's Redhead Pond, which is a protected pond. We're not building on that pond. But there is a, a tidal pond-
On the-
-on the property, but from what I saw, if you can go back to the presentation.
All right, we would call those, uh, the-
Right.
Christian Wildlife call those freshwater emergent that only exist when there's precipitation or tidal.
That this area right here in red, I would assume indicates a lower elevation floodplain. What's going on with the red? The red?
The red area?
The red is the, on the wetland map would, or I'm sorry, the floodplain map would be considered freshwater emergent, which only fills periodically as either tidal action due to a storm or natural drain off with rainfall, precipitation. But it is not a consistent pond, so the Fish and Wildlife recognize that it's only occurring in the issue, in the event of a storm.
Okay.
Okay. I just bring this up because in our area out here and not just in this area, but all over the city of Corpus Christi, people seem to have, uh, issue with, um, drainage.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially with new development. And new development versus existing development. And with that, sometimes, you know, the developer has to accommodate the older development that's been there so that the water does flush down.
We absolutely do have to, per your code.
Yeah, that's, that's required. It's not an option.
Okay.
Right, yeah, with, yes.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, I think I'll-
But, go ahead.
So go ahead, Madam Chair, so, sorry.
Well, at this time, no, we don't take any other, well, I guess he can come with that.
He's already spoken.
Oh, he's already spoken. Okay, sorry. At this time, we can't. Uh, any others would like to come and speak on, on this item? If not, then I'll go ahead and cut, close a public comment and entertain a motion or other questions for staff.
I just had, uh, one comment, uh, or two comments. Um, first comment is, um, I can corroborate his story. I did get a phone call earlier today from Joe Kramer with the Flower Bluff Citizens Council. And for those that don't know, Flower Bluff Citizens Council is a, is not a, you know, they're an organized group, but it's not a, a city sanctioned group by any means, but, but it is a group of residents in Flower Bluff. And they did confirm that they did meet with the applicant and, um, and did, uh, or at least whichever ones met with them did agree with the development itself. And the other thing that I wanted to let everybody know is that this is a zoning case. And our, our purview as, as this body is to look at it and look at the area development plan and determine if it's an appropriate, uh, change of use from what it currently is. Because it's important to point out that though this is not developed right now, it is currently, um, zoned RS6 and it could be developed at any time right now with, uh, 6,000 square foot lots. Um, so we have to, and, and I was a, a member of the, and this was a couple of years ago, but I was a member, uh, the Planning Commission, member of the Flower Bluff Area Development Plan in developing this plan. And, um, I also want to point out that CN1 is the lowest commercial zoning district that we have in the UDC, correct, Andrew? Um, so you're looking at, um, doctor's offices, you're looking at an all-state office, you're looking at maybe a lawyer's office, um, not, no bars, restaurants, anything like that. And all of your concerns are extremely valid with regards to sewer, with regards to drainage, with regards to all of the things that many of you have cited. Unfortunately, though, for us, those aren't things that we are considering right now. Those are things that happen during the plating phase and whenever they go to construction and, um, apply for building permits and things like that, that's when all that gets worked out. So the job that's in front of us today is to look at this piece of property and say, is this, um, appropriate to have this form of zoning? On the CN1 side, um, because it's a lower, um, lower, uh, not density, but, um, uh, intensity, thank you. Um, you know, you have to consider that. Uh, the high-density, uh, RM1, um, is, or, or 22 units per acre, but I can tell you right now, as somebody in the construction business and looking at this piece of property, you're not going to be able to build an apartment complex there. It's not going to happen. Um, so I am going to be voting for this, but I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew why I'm voting for this because there's only certain things that are within our purview on a zoning case.
That's correct. And being the fact that we are planning commissioners, this is all we can do and whatever comes out of this, then you can go ahead and take it up to the city council because they will have to vote on this as well. We're just a recommending board. So therefore, whatever we decide, you still take it up, it still has to go to the, to the city council for vote. So at this time, I'll ask any of the commissioners for, uh, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um, now moving on to Director's Report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. There is no report for tonight.
Okay. No future agenda items as well?
There is a ongoing discussion about the UDC amendments. That's, that's going to be coming soon. Um, there are some amendments coming up. Uh, I see Yvette trying to hide in the back. Uh, amendments coming up on fees and so we want to partner those together so we can hit you with a larger glove at the same time instead of, uh, two punches. But that'll be coming up soon.
And I want to give a shout-out to Yvette and a shout-out to Andrew Demus because I wasn't able to do it yesterday. And Buck, you are not a POS.
Okay, with that, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.